Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Dawson County Board of Commissioners Work Session this afternoon, September 17th, 2020. Welcome to those that are present and those that are online watching us. As you can see, our fearless leader Chairman Thurman is out. So unfortunately, you're dealing with the B team, which is me tonight, and we're going to do our best to be efficient with our time and with your time and go through our agenda as it is. I do have a change to our work session agenda. We typically don't vote on these, but due to this change, I'd like for us to go ahead and do a vote. I'd like to add seven B, which is going to be, the topic's going to be discussion of adding a special call meeting. Coming up soon for discussion on sign appeals.
I October 8th, did not, was that not the day?
Those are options, correct. So I'd like to add that as some B. So if we can, go ahead and get a motion on approving the agenda with the changes. Got a motion from Commissioner, we typically don't, but since we're making a change, it was advised that we have a vote on it. We've got a motion from Commissioner Nix and a second from Commissioner Satterfield. All those in favor? And the agenda has passed with the one change that we have. So we're going to dive right into the agenda tonight. We do have, just for, for the public's knowledge, we have Chairman Thurman is on the phone listening tonight and able to add comment. Our first topic is going to be unfinished business, which is the presentation of the cable TV proposals that we heard a couple of weeks ago from our Director, Mr. Thompson, and he is coming back to give us some additional information, I believe. So, Mr. Thompson?
Good afternoon. Yep, we're going to talk about some TV today. Okay, any questions from any of you based on what we discussed last time?
Other than the requests that we, that I had for other options?
Yep, which we got that covered. One change to the numbers that you have in front of you in your packet is that the Sheriff's Office and jail numbers are no longer in there. He has decided to go ahead and go forward with Dish Network. Okay, so those numbers are no longer part of that packet that is in front of you.
How much would that lower the price then?
It lowers it significantly. The installation costs alone were over $6,000 just for that.
Was he taking it out of his budget?
I'm not sure. He's working on that with finance.
I believe we asked that question last time. Vicky said it does wind up hitting each department's individual budget. So yeah, that's constitutional office, right? Has ability to do that.
Okay, so as we looked at this, there are four basic options that are before the board, okay? The satellite TV option, okay, which we recommend addition at work, over the air, okay, which some people call rabbit ears. Internet streaming, okay, which is Hulu plus live TV, and the fourth option, do nothing. Okay, because that is always an option. Okay, so who are we doing this for? Okay, trying to cover all the bases here. Okay, we're doing it for our first responders, first and foremost, fire and EMS, okay, our senior citizens at the senior center. Okay, they benefit from this. Our county leaders and elected officials who have access to it, as well as our directors and staff within the county. So what options? Okay, well, let's talk about Dish Network first, because that's the one that we've taken a look at, okay? Give you guys some pros and cons here. Okay, some of the pros, it's good quality, great selection, it is reliable, it's maintained by the vendor who installs it. And just like if you have cable TV at home, it just works, okay? The downside, the monthly cost, okay, that's a cost that we've never had before, since we got Windstream previously for free for many years. Okay, so that is a brand new cost that's before us.
Even though it was cable, it was free?
Yes, Windstream gave it to us at no charge. We get a lot of different services from Windstream, and that was one that they just gave to us. We've had it pretty much since this building went in, and we never got a bill for it. It was completely free to us, which is why this hit us kind of out of the blue. Because they never thought, oh, hey, let's let Dawson County know that we're cutting off their service. We never got charged for it, so we weren't included as part of that.
Was it government service? Was it the government service? I mean, the residential people had to pay.
Sure. Well, we paid them. Oh, yeah, absolutely. It was great. We pay them so much for the internet services and all that they provide. It was basically a... Yeah, exactly. So our second option, over the air, okay, the pros, obvious. Well, service is free, okay? The cons, inconsistent signal, okay? This is sent over the air, just like before you probably had cable or satellite TV at home, you had rabbit ears, okay? And sometimes you'd have to get out the tin foil, sometimes stand on one leg, hold it this way if you wanted to get channel 46, okay? It's a little bit better now, but it's the same basic principle. It's being sent over the air, okay? We would have limited channels if we went with this, okay? The vendor that we've been working with estimates that we would get probably six to eight channels, three of which would be either Spanish or shopping channels, okay? An investment in this serves a singular purpose, okay? It is just for over the air. It can't really be used for anything else. And lastly, it is highly sensitive to lightning. We would be putting an antenna of considerable size on each of our buildings that is susceptible to lightning. Okay, so each building would have to be certified by an electrician prior to any type of installation. To give you an idea of coverage area, this is the list of channels that the FCC says are available in our area. Now, that just means that the signal is strong enough to reach this area. It does not guarantee that we would get a signal. It's affected by all sorts of things like terrain, weather, things like that, okay? So one day you may have a signal, the next day you may not. There's no guarantee of how many signals we would be able to get. Okay, the third option, internet streaming, okay? This one is a little more complicated, okay, because it's not like cable TV, it's not like over the air, okay? This one is a completely different technology, okay? So we're going to talk about it a little bit more, just so that you're comfortable with why this is an option and how it works, okay? The pros here, very similar to cable TV, good quality, good selection, it's reliable, and its investment serves multiple purposes, okay? Because as part of this, we would be upgrading the wireless infrastructure in all of our facilities, okay? As well as adding additional internet connections, which is never a bad thing. It gets many of the same channels with Hulu plus live TV that you would get as part of cable TV. You pay one monthly fee, and you get to broadcast it to as many locations as you want to. Okay, so why, we talked about this in the previous meeting, why is streaming a bad idea? Well, it's not, okay? It's just not a good idea here, okay? For example, in your house, okay, you may stream Netflix, Hulu, YouTube, okay? And it works just fine as long as you have a decent internet signal, right? And that's what a lot of it comes down to, is how good your internet signal is, okay? So the reason why it's not necessarily a great idea comes down to pie, okay? Seems like an odd answer, right? And at this point, you're questioning whether or not your IT director lost his mind, right?
No, okay, let's... I've never seen one with a sense of humor, so...
Hey, no problem. I am unique in that respect, absolutely. Okay, so let's imagine for a moment, okay, and we're going to use this comparison, okay, towards why internet streaming, on top of what we already do for the county as far as internet, is not a great idea without some significant upgrades, okay? Imagine for a moment if I had a pie, and I had to share that pie with all of these good folks in here, just one pie, okay? That's not quite enough pie for everybody in here, is it? Okay, well, it's not really so different than what we're talking about, okay? If the four of you were in a house, and you were sharing an internet connection, and you were streaming, okay, maybe Hulu or Netflix or whatever, it would probably work okay as long as you had a decent internet connection, okay? Each person that uses that internet connection takes a slice of that pie, okay? The round circle of the pie is your internet connection, and each person who connects and uses that internet connection takes a slice of the pie. Makes sense, okay? Well, here at the county, we use that pie for a lot of different things, okay? Most people think of it as, oh, yeah, it's our internet connection, okay? Well, that internet connection gets used for a lot of different things, okay? For example, our email, okay, our internet research, streaming these meetings as we are doing right now, that's using our internet connection. Zoom meetings, which have become a big part of what we do, okay? A lot of our meetings now, instead of people coming to us or us going to them, they come in remotely. All that uses our internet connection, okay? Our phone calls, internet, okay? Public relations uses it, our building security uses it, our monitoring of our facilities uses it, and like in a storm like we had last night. Randy uses that internet connection when he's out of the building to make sure that the AC is still working. If the power kicks in, is the generator working, okay? We use it for cybersecurity, hugely important, okay? Everything that we do goes through that cybersecurity, which is all monitored outside of this building, okay? To make sure everything's good. We use it for our firehouse software, our disaster recovery services, where we keep our data off-site. We use it for DCIC and ICON and multiple vendor services and multiple web-based programs and services. Okay, so how much does streaming cost the network now that you know that each person who uses the internet connection takes a slice of pie, okay? How much does that pie cost, that slice, okay? Well, most people use full HD.
Okay, which is Hulu plus live TV and the fourth option do nothing. Okay, because that is always an option. Okay, so. Who are we doing this for? Okay, trying to cover all the bases here. Okay. We're doing it for our first responders, first and foremost, fire and EMS. Okay, our senior citizens at the senior center. Okay, they benefit from this. Our county leaders and elected officials who have access to it. As well as our directors and staff within the county. So what options? Okay, well, let's talk about Dish Network first because that's the one that. We've taken a look at. Okay, gave you guys some pros and cons here. Okay, some of the pros. It's good quality, great selection. It is reliable. It's maintained by the vendor who installs it. And just like if you have cable TV at home, it just works. Okay. The downside, the monthly cost. Okay, that's a cost that we've never had before since we got Windstream. Previously for free for many years. Okay, so that is a brand new cost that's before us.
Even though it was cable, it was free?
Yes, Windstream gave it to us at no charge. We get a lot of different services from Windstream. And that was one that they just gave to us. We've had it pretty much since this building went in. And we never got a bill for it. It was completely free to us, which is why this hit us kind of out of the blue. Because they never thought, oh, hey, let's let Dawson County know that we're cutting off their service. We never got charged for it, so we weren't included as part of that.
Government service? Was it the government service? I mean, I mean, the residential people had to pay.
Sure.
So.
Well, we paid.
I mean, I'm glad.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. It was great. We pay them so much for the internet services and all that they provide. It was basically a.
Stone in there with it.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so our second option, over the air. Okay, the pros, obvious. Well, service is free. Okay, the cons inconsistent signal. Okay. This is sent over the air, just like before you probably had cable or satellite TV at home. You had rabbit ears. Okay, and sometimes you'd have to get out the tin foil, sometimes stand on one leg, hold it this way if you wanted to get. Channel forty six. Okay, it's a little bit better now, but it's the same basic principle. It's being sent over the air. Okay. We would have limited channels if we went with this. Okay, the. Vendor that we've been working with estimates that we would get probably six to eight channels. Three of which would be either Spanish or shopping channels. Okay. An investment in this serves a singular purpose. Okay, it is just for over the air. Okay, it can't really be used for anything else. And lastly, it is highly sensitive to lightning. We would be putting an antenna. Of considerable size on each of our buildings that is susceptible to lightning. Okay, so each building would have to be certified by an electrician prior to any type of installation. Okay. To give you an idea of coverage area, this is the list of channels that the FCC. Says are available in our area. Now, that just means that the signal is strong enough to reach this area. It does not guarantee that we would get a signal. It's affected by all sorts of things like terrain, weather, things like that. Okay. So one day you may have a signal, the next day you may not. There's no guarantee of how many signals we would be able to get. Okay. The third option, internet streaming. Okay, this one is a little more complicated. Okay, because. It's not like cable TV. It's not like over the air. Okay, this one is a completely different technology. Okay, so we're going to talk about it a little bit more, just so that you're comfortable with. Why this is an option and how it works. Okay, the pros here, very similar to cable TV. Good quality, good selection, it's reliable. And its investment serves multiple purposes. Okay, because as part of this, we would be upgrading the wireless infrastructure in all of our facilities. Okay, as well as adding additional internet connections, which is never a bad thing. It gets many of the same channels with Hulu plus live TV that you would get as part of cable TV. Now, you pay one monthly fee. And you get to broadcast it to as many locations as you want to. Okay, so why? We talked about this in the previous meeting. Why is streaming a bad idea? Well, it's not. Okay, it's just not a good idea. Here. Okay, for example. In your house, okay, you may stream Netflix, Hulu, YouTube, okay? And it works just fine as long as you have a decent internet signal, right? And that's what a lot of it comes down to is how good your internet signal is. Okay. So the reason why it's not necessarily a great idea. Comes down to pie. Okay, seems like an odd answer, right? And at this point, you're questioning whether or not your IT director lost his mind, right? No. Okay.
I've never seen one with a sense of humor, so.
I am unique in that respect, absolutely. Okay, so let's imagine for a moment. Okay, and we're going to use this comparison. Okay, towards why internet streaming on top of what we already do for the county as far as internet. Is not a great idea without some significant upgrades. Okay, imagine for a moment if I had a pie. And I had to share that pie with all of these good folks in here. Just one pie. Okay. That's not quite enough pie for everybody in here, is it? Okay, well, it's not really so different than what we're talking about. Okay, if. The four of you were in a house and you were sharing an internet connection. And you were streaming, okay, maybe Hulu or Netflix or whatever. It would probably work okay as long as you had a decent internet connection. Okay, each person. That uses that internet connection takes a slice of that pie. Okay. The round circle of the pie is your internet connection. And each person who connects and uses that internet connection takes a slice of the pie. Make sense? Okay, well, here at the county. We use that pie for a lot of different things. Okay, most people think of it as, oh, yeah, it's our internet connection. Okay, well, that internet connection gets used for a lot of different things. Okay, for example, our email. Okay, our internet research, streaming these meetings as we are doing right now, that's using our internet connection. Zoom meetings, which have become a big part of what we do. Okay, a lot of our meetings now, instead of. People coming to us or us going to them, they come in remotely. All that uses our internet connection. Okay, our phone calls, internet. Okay. Public relations uses it. Our building security uses it. Our monitoring of our facilities uses it. And like in a storm like we had last night. Randy uses that internet connection when he's out of the building to make sure that. The AC is still working. If the power kicks in, is the generator working? Okay. We use it for cybersecurity, hugely important. Okay, everything that we do. Goes through that cybersecurity, which is all monitored outside of this building, right, to make sure everything's good. We use it for our firehouse software, our disaster recovery services where we keep our data off site. We use it for DCIC and Icon and multiple vendor services. And multiple web-based programs and services. Okay. Okay, so how much does streaming cost the network? Now that you know. That each person who uses the internet connection takes a slice of pie. Okay, how much does that pie? Cost that slice? Okay, well, most people use full HD. Okay, or just regular HD, which equates out to about two to three gigabytes per hour. Okay, with 4K, which is becoming more popular, you're talking almost sixteen gigabytes per hour. It's huge. Okay. To give you an idea of size, okay, because I know you guys don't work with data sizes all day like I do. Imagine a typical Word document. Okay, is the size of a paperclip physically. Sixteen gigabytes would be the size of this room. Okay, huge difference. Okay. Now imagine taking that data. And multiplying it across all of our facilities all at the same time. That's a lot of pie. Okay, and that's more pie than we can handle. Okay, when you start taking that much, you start having issues. Emails take longer to go out. Voice over IP phone calls start being affected by what's called jitter. Okay, where they can hear you, but you can't hear them so well or vice versa. Okay, it becomes all sorts of issues. Okay. And if you're streaming video, we've all probably seen this at some point. Okay, so. And the last option, do nothing. Okay, well, do nothing has no cost. Okay. It is also one less project that we have on our plate. The cons, all the TVs in government center and all of our facilities and whatnot will remain dark. It's one less source of information for our people in the county. And I can pretty much assure you that Danny Thompson will give each of you a call at home during dinner to discuss. I told him I'd give him a shout out tonight.
I think he's red under that mask.
So what do? What are other counties doing who have been in the same boat? Well. They chose Dish Network. Lumberton County just finished this exact same. Installation that we're proposing here. Okay, because they were in the exact same boat that we were. Okay. And as far as your IT staff, okay, we've put about a hundred and twenty hours into working on these different options for you. We've learned a lot about TV that we never knew we needed to know. And we also recommend Dish Network out of these options. So, any questions?
I know it's pretty prevalent these days for employees to utilize their personal cell phones. And a lot of times that involves streaming on their own phones. Do we have that locked down where that is not a capability where they can access YouTube or other. Roku channels via their phone when they're on breaks or whatnot?
We do not, no, because YouTube is used quite frequently within our facilities for different training purposes.
So. Not to muddy the waters, but we're already consuming, I mean, if an employee has access to their phone and they're streaming data on their phone, they're still consuming those same numbers that you talked about.
Not necessarily.
Maybe not to that level, but.
Yeah, and a phone is going to stream at standard definition and not high definition by default.
Okay. So employees do have the ability to watch what they want to watch on their phones?
Yes.
What about DirecTV?
DirecTV was in the previous proposal. The monthly cost on that was significantly higher. I think it was three thousand dollars a year higher, I believe.
The installation, the installation cost was less, but the long term cost was higher.
Exactly.
Have we polled the employees to see what they want?
Yes, I've discussed it with directors and they would prefer Dish Network. The benefit there, as far as from their perspective, is it just works. Turn on the TV. There you go. You don't have to worry about logging into this and etc.
It's just, you know, the environment that we're in with everybody being so particular and their access being readily available right there. It just. The TV situation doesn't seem to be as important as it used to be at one time before we could watch it on our phones, but I get it.
For right now, we don't have anything.
Correct.
When did they shut off?
It's been off for three, three and a half months now, I believe.
So do we need to move this to tonight?
Yeah, that'd be up to the board. If we want to make a decision to move forward, we can move it over to tonight's agenda.
I'm ready.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Christian, if you'll make a note of that. All right, thank you for your in-depth hundred and twenty hours you spent researching this because. It's a new cost that we have that we have not anticipated until you presented it to us.
It's a lot.
Very typical, so we want to do our best and do our due diligence on those costs. So next up, we have new business. We are going to. Your presentation of the proposed quick claim deed to release the county's leasehold interest in the that certain these attorneys. Type so funky that it's hard to read these things. That certain three hundred acres, three hundred plus acres of real property being sold by Etowah Water and Sewer Authority. And that is going to be Angela Davis.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner and Board. So what's before you for consideration today is sort of the. End product of what has been discussed over the course of the last year, year. As you may remember, the Etowah Water and Sewer Authority. Owns three hundred plus acres of property. As part of a larger acreage that the authority acquired some time ago with the assistance from the county and that that acquisition was many, many years ago. As part of the underlying purchase transaction in original terms, the authority leased this property to the county. At this point, the authority has now sold this three hundred plus acres, a portion of this larger tract. And the board previously approved that sale sometime earlier this year. So now the property closing is coming up in the next couple of weeks. And as part of a belt and suspenders approach, as often happens with closings, just to make sure all title assurances are covered. That we have been requested to issue a quick claim deed to our leasehold interest, so that just makes clear that the county. That we've already approved it, that we don't own it, that we are showing them that we have no continuing interest in this property for purposes of the new sale. To close. And so if it meets with your approval. We would want to move this to the next voting session. I don't think it has to be done necessarily tonight. To my understanding, the closing set for a few weeks, but we would ultimately want to seek formal approval of this quick claim deed.
Okay, we've heard that. Does anybody, anybody have any questions? On that proposal? And it's my understanding this doesn't have anything to do with our other ongoing conversation about another piece of this property.
Yes, that's exactly right.
The question, there's a hundred and seventy five acres that's dated to the Etowah River mitigation bank. Is that part of this three hundred acres? Because in that covenant, that goes to Etowah water mitigation.
Commissioner Nix, I don't think so. I can confirm that for you, but I don't believe so, because if it's part of that mitigation bank, we would not be able to sell it. It would be restricted. So I'm quite certain. Oh, is there? Okay, David, can you speak to that then? I'm not as familiar. Thank you.
I'll do my best and it's a great memory. In two thousand and one, we did develop the mitigation bank. There is. This is the portion to the south side of the river. And I believe Mr. Strickland has been working with Dave and I on an agreement with Etowah. Where we will retain the rights to all of the mitigation bank, so that all of those land covenants are met. So yes, there is a small portion of the, the old preservation credits as well as some restoration credits. But the majority of that bank is on the north side of the Etowah River, so it is not affected by this, this particular piece of property.
So then there's still three hundred acres that's green clear. I mean, I don't.
Yeah, so just to clarify, the mitigation bank is part of the larger area that's untouched and staying. With the authority in this three hundred acres is not involved in the mitigation bank. Is that right?
No, that's not correct. There is a small portion of the three hundred acres that is, will remain green space and is covenant restricted.
Right.
I wasn't aware of anything where it couldn't be sold, but it's covenant restricted that it has to stay with the minimum.
Restricted, okay.
Correct.
Yeah, it could never be developed.
It can never be developed, that's correct. And there is a small portion of that three hundred as part of that. The portion that fronts Etowah River. Is, is in mitigation.
Angie, if you would look in deed book. Four sixteen, pages three twelve through three forty eight, that might clarify. How much is in that?
And it would can. What was the deed book page again?
Four sixteen. Pages three twelve through three forty eight.
And I'm afraid Mr. Strickland in my office has been working on this with staff, so he knows a lot more than I do, so I, I think he might be able to address that more specifically, which I'll have us do before we put this on a future agenda. But it sounds like there's no concern from staff based upon our mitigation intentions. With this quick claim, is that correct? Because this is really just fulfilling what the board's previously approved.
Yes, and I think the, the reason why staff is involved, if I may clear that, clear that up. The mitigations are sold out. The wetlands have been sold out for many years. There is five hundred. Five hundred and fifteen point nine to be exact, stream credits that are still available for sales in that bank. We have elected to keep those stream credits for our own use, so if we have a pipe project for a road. Or if Etowah has a project for a sewer line or something like that, that we don't have to go back out on open market and buy those. So. What we've been working with Mr. Strickland is in the agreement, the sale agreement is all of those mitigation credits stay and retain. In the bank and we own the bank, so those would stay with the county and Etowah. So that, that's been our involvement over the. Past couple of weeks trying to determine that. So that was, try to add a little clarification there.
Thank you.
Did you say stays with the county and not Etowah? Etowah doesn't.
So the bank was, was jointly developed by Etowah and Dawson County. So we jointly own the bank. So. The, I'm sorry. The, the proposal that we're discussing is that we would split those just as the cost of, of the bank has been all along, that we would split those five hundred and fifteen. On paper, down the middle, half would go, would retain with Etowah, the other half would retain with the county. And then we wouldn't sell those on open market. They would strictly be used for county projects moving forward. And I can't tell you if you were to say what, what road project would they use them for. I don't know right now. So.
Is that address your concerns, Christian? Any other questions on this side?
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item number two, which is a presentation of the Highway Enforcement of Aggressive Traffic Heat Grant, and I believe Deputy Rowan, oh, we have the sheriff here tonight.
Well, certainly my appreciation to you for hearing this on such short notice. We actually applied for this grant earlier this year. We were hearing positive news that we would probably want to get it. Well, they notified us on September the eleventh. Of last week, so that's the reason for the quick turnaround with this. Basically, what we've asked for, Board, is, is they have awarded us a grant that will pay you for two. Two positions. It will pay for the salaries. It will pay for two vehicles. It will pay for. Computers, speed detection equipment, training. It'll also pay for vehicle maintenance. All that we have to do is a county, we would have to pay for their salary or their benefits. So that would come up to totally for two positions would be fifty two, a little over fifty two thousand dollars. It's assuming that they take everything, full insurance and so forth. So that's what we would be looking at. Over a year's time.
Okay, any questions from the board?
How long is this? Is this good for just a year?
It's good for a year. We'd have free visits to you next year. Right.
How often, I mean, this historical path on these, we haven't had this in the past, is that correct?
That's correct.
And so do they typically, I would assume they, once they've made that investment, they would typically probably continue that, I would think, as long as funding is available at the state level or whatnot.
And it would be on us. Obviously, we're required to submit certain statistics, things of that nature. Now, it is designed to gradually win you off of the grant. But, you know, next year it may be eighty percent or something like that, but we would just come to you at that time.
Tell me exactly what the, this is a special unit that does aggressive traffic. Can you define what that their main goals would be?
Well, their whole goal would be simply to reduce fatalities, increase DUI enforcement, speeding, things of that nature. And honestly, our counties get to the point where our population, with our density, that we are receiving more and more traffic complaints. It's difficult for our patrol officers to respond and handle a lot of these, trying to balance the other duties. So the good thing about this is that they, this is their job. They'd be coming on duty and working specifically traffic.
Doesn't impact our reliance on the State Patrol at all for.
And that, we will still have that relationship.
Excellent.
Does that entail following Chris Gaines a lot when he's driving? I wasn't talking about aggressive, I'm just kidding.
I hear you, knock on wood. That hadn't happened in Dawson County in many years, in Dawson County in many years.
What, go ahead, I just, so they'd be mainly, you know, the hours, probably.
It's going to fluctuate. There'd be a lot of nights, a lot of weekends, a lot of holidays, things like that.
I was reading there sometimes like that, where the state does a big. I guess, aggressive, doing the holidays and stuff, so they gotta do so many nights during the month or whenever they have that campaign.
That's right. Not only will we be assisting other agencies, but they will be coming here in Dawson County to do it as well, so we'll reap that benefit also.
I'm noticing that also the seatbelt.
Yes.
I mean, for child seats.
That's correct.
Things like that, so that's a good program they did at the shopping centers and different locations.
That's great.
That's good.
And Sheriff, there is a timeline on this. You, are you requesting us to move this to our voting session this evening?
Please.
Okay. Anybody have any problems with that? Any other questions?
Yes, who in the world knows about all these special conditions? Of this grant? I've never seen, I hope you've got somebody that that's all they do.
Well, it's not all he does, but he's in the room with today Captain Anthony Davis. I've got to give him all the credit.
Where is he?
He's in the back, doesn't want the job.
Because I'm telling you what, that'd cross your eyes when you read that.
He wants that new black and gray card on him.
That's right. Yeah, he wrote a good grant.
So that's his job?
No, ma'am.
I mean, part of his job.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, I'm telling you, it's complicated.
Any other questions?
So that goes to the night.
All right, Christian, we can add that to tonight's voting session, please. Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Sheriff, just a comment and good example of utilizing going after the grants in order to stretch our tax dollars further, so appreciate that. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation of professional exemption. And budget increase request for production of schedules and tables for rural and urban properties. And we are going to hear from Chief Appraiser Elaine Garrett this evening.
Commissioner, good evening. I'm before you requesting an addition to our budget. In the amount of thirty nine thousand five hundred dollars to cover the cost of updating our urban and rural land schedules for the two thousand twenty one appraisal year. And in with that, there is a request for exemption that I've worked on with Melissa Hawke. Asking that we be able to present the contract to you from McCormick Solutions, as they've done previous work for the county of this nature. I also have Kelly McCormick with McCormick Solutions with us this afternoon to go into detail about that contract and give you the scope of what they'll be doing for us.
Mr. McCormick?
Thank you for having me this afternoon. I appreciate the invite. We. Have a rural and urban land reevaluation, so this one's just targeting land in the county. We've already done commercial land and buildings previously, so that, that part of it's done. The reason, and as I was talking to Elaine earlier, the, the big thing that jumps out at me whenever we're very familiar with this data, we've been. In front of it for quite a long time now. We're, the thing that's concerning about the rural land to me is every three years, there's a, the. State comes in and does a digest review. And that digest review basically is kind of like the chief appraiser report card. Are you doing everything that needs to be done? And so at the current state, and Elaine already brought it to our attention, the. The land, the way that it's currently being valued is not by the APM, which is. Basically, the the appraisers guideline for the state of how appraisal should be done, and it does not meet the qualifications. So it's a constant slap on the wrist if it stays in that state right now. Um, Elaine has noticed it. Elaine has brought it to our attention. She was concerned about it, she's been concerned about it. But here's the 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 fact of the matter is most appraisal offices are trying to just keep up with the day to day, that all the new construction. Just keeping up with values as they are, going through a full revale project or or basically stripping something out and redoing it is a is a fairly large task. And you're talking about probably needing a couple of extra people in the office for and concentrating on it for two or three months straight. And a lot of times that personnel is just not available. It's just not possible. And I know a lot of counties are in a situation where it's not just real easy to add extra personnel to an office. And so with this amount of money being, you know, in several of the counties we work in, basically maybe one person's. Here, you get uh, two level, uh, level four appraisers, which is chief appraiser level, that's as high as you can go in Georgia. Doing the project, hands on, know, you know, knowing the land values backwards and forwards. And we'll be able to not only do that, but also represent you in BOEs to hold those values so that you don't lose a lot off the digest if anything's added on. But a lot of this is going to be equity. Last year, you know, if you get commercial where it needs to be and residential, they made some increases to the the house values. Now we need to really concentrate on these land values to make sure they're equitable too, because these people that have vacant lots, they need to be paying their fair share, just like everybody else is. So this is kind of like the last piece of the puzzle. And once this piece is in, uh, it can be easily, it can be a lot more easily maintained than it can be redone.
Okay, do we, um, do we have any other questions? Do we have any questions?
Well, now, in this little Didi introduction here, it says rural and urban. Do we have any urban properties?
So rural and urban, that's almost like a, I almost want to call it a.
Oxymoron.
It's a, it's appraiser, it's appraiser lingo.
Oh, okay.
Uh, in the CAMA system, there's two basic ways. And when I say CAMA system, Wing Gap, the appraisal system that we enter all our data into, and it gives us the values by the schedules that we put in. There's two main ways to value uh, land property. So rural is your larger acreage tracts, your acreage tracts off off of, uh, you know, just side streets. Not on main roads, not in subdivisions. Land in subdivisions and commercial land and industrial land gets valued on an urban land schedule. So if you can think about a set of properties that would have its own independent land valuation method, that would normally be considered urban properties. You're, if you think of acreage prices, if you pass by a lot and you're like, oh, I bet it's twenty four thousand dollars an acre, that's probably on the rural side, just to kind of put it into. But if you go through a subdivision and most things are selling for thirty thousand dollars a lot, that would be an urban situation.
And the request for the professional exemptions, because you guys have already been engaged and involved in the process, and we see some efficiencies. Because you've already done a lot of that due diligence on the front end, I assume is that, that's why Elaine was asking for that. Any other questions?
It rural, is that agriculture? Are you going to be doing agriculture?
Yes, agricultural properties will be, and and one point about that is the conservation use properties. They will get a second set of eyes on them, and whenever we do any of these projects concerning land. Every county and every board of assessors has every right to place down whatever rules they feel, but those people are getting an exemption. And if we find things that we feel like they shouldn't be getting the exemption, we'll pass those along too. So it's kind of, this is one of those things where it's kind of a little bit more going into it than watch this on that paper. That is the job we will do, but as Elaine can attest, we do a lot more while we're here. We're basically a phone call away and for any help in the office, but that exemption will be looked at as well, so.
So if we've got property under conservation use, which I have. And and tear up our covenant, if I've just signed something up for ten years that I won't change any of this, but you're going to come in here and can you value it? And just tear all that up?
The revaluation, the revaluation won't tear up anything. We can, we can make suggestions, but always our suggestion has will forever be, it's got to be something. You have to be doing some kind of non-agricultural commercial business on the property or something. You've got to be doing something that you shouldn't be doing based on the covenant that you signed. If the covenant is, uh, you know, agreed to, and these things were going on, we normally recommend not, uh. Not trying to break the covenant, because it should have been found out in the first place. All we're going to do is point to situations where this might need to have a second look when it comes time to re-sign up. If we did find a commercial business on one, of course, we'd point that out too, but no, us ourselves, we can't do anything. At the end of the day, it's the board of assessors, it's their decision for things like that, but that's another benefit to this, is you get another pair of eyes going through some properties that. You know, don't always get looked at every single year as far as those covenant. Unless some, a permit comes through, something's got to come up to catch the officer's attention, we'll be looking at all of them.
How long will it take you to do this?
Well, I mean, we can, we can.
A year or?
No, I mean, that's a, it it will be done in in one single appraisal year.
Okay.
Yes.
So this might be an Elaine question, when would, when are you looking to start the contract, would it be in this fiscal year or?
It would be in this fiscal year, yes, and it would, it would spill over into twenty twenty one.
So is your request for the thirty nine? Thirty nine, thirty nine five, is that all to come out of this year's budget? Are you dividing it where you would get into next year's budget as well?
I believe I spoke with Vicky, and we would, we would use it both budget years. We would need to start this year, and then we would finish by April one of next year.
So we would need to do a budget amendment for this year, and then we would, you would add that into your budget proposal coming up for next year, correct?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Well, how do you pay this? I mean, is this one lump sum? Or how how do you pay him?
We, we have discussed that, I've discussed that with the other folks with McCormick Solutions, and we would need to pay part upfront. And then at the end, when all work is completed.
So two payments?
Yes.
What you would need to do is approve the full amount this year, so we could issue the PO.
Gotcha.
Because the PO would be for the whole amount of the contract. And then whatever amount was not fulfilled in this year would be rolled forward to the next year.
Okay. Total amount though is thirty nine five.
Yes.
Any other questions? Is there a, is this time sensitive as well, or do we, can we put this on our upcoming agendas? Okay. Okay. Anyone else? All right, thank you, thank you for coming. Thank you, Elaine. Uh, next we have on agenda, uh, item four, which is the presentation of Bailey Waters Road Culvert Rehab Project Change Order. Public Works Director, Mr. David McKee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. You recall, uh, May twenty first of this year, um, this board approved a contract with Townley Construction to rehab. Three culverts on Bailey Waters Road and a fourth culvert on Sweetwater Juno. To date, the Sweetwater Juno culvert has been rehabilitated and removed. As the contract stated, um, the extension, um, as part of the scope, the extension on the pipes on Bailey Waters have been completed, backfilled. The the reason for this change order is pretty simple. These pipes, you recall, I told you they were fully deteriorated. There was very little pipe left. They're egg shaped, they've deteriorated and started being egg shaped, so they start out at sixty inches. Because of the shape of the pipe and the and and the way it's deteriorated, they have to go up to a line, up a liner size. So they have to go up to a seventy two inch liner size because of the voids and everything else. There's no real way of knowing that until you get in there and start walking through it. It was so deteriorating, me personally, I'm not going to walk through that. So there was really no way to know that until the lining company gets there. So my request is that we cha, that we approve this change order for thirteen thousand five hundred and forty dollars. What that is, is is the three pipes on Bailey Waters Road, that's the increased cost there. Also, and I I did not do a very good job when presenting this the first time about presenting the request for a contingency budget. And this is, you you've heard me a lot about saying that, but this is exactly the reason for that. That's less than four percent of the total project cost, which is well within the 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 industry standard. So I would also request then an additional five thousand dollars for contingency. You'll also recall, we've got a road contractor out there doing some rehab work. When all of these contractors are done, there's a little bit of riprap and stuff that we want to put in as the county. That was not spelled out real clear in the motion. What the board approved on the twenty first was strictly just the Townley Construction amount. Um, and we originally had additional budget in there for that. But what all that's in the the line item is the Townley Construction amount. So my request today is thirteen thousand five hundred and forty dollars for change order number one, plus an additional five thousand dollars, which is will not to exceed five thousand dollars. For that, uh, for those projects. Those funds would be coming out of the SPOX six fund balance, so this would not be a general fund expense, and those would be allocated. From the public works projects. The only additional comment I have is for the sake of moving this project forward, we do need to, I would request that this be moved to tonight's uh, voting session. Contractors have been mobilized, they are sitting stable until we get approval for this change order. I'll attempt to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, David, do we have any questions from the board?
The contingency money is just for rip rap?
It could be for rip rap. We, as part of the easement agreements from the property owners, we got some access roads down there. So we may need to straighten that access road up if if it's torn up or something like that. It may be some additional grassing that's, you know, dependent, so it would be directly used for this project. And what wouldn't get used, if we use a thousand of it, then it would go back to the SPOX six fund balance for public works projects.
Reason I was asking, because rip rap is expensive.
Yes.
It's very expensive, so I didn't know if even that was enough, so.
I I believe it is, yes.
Any other questions for David? All right, thank you, David. And you said we do need to move this to tonight's voting session, everybody okay with that? Thank you.
They get those roads fixed.
All right, next we have, uh, item number five on our agenda, which is the presentation of the two thousand twenty one holiday and payroll calendar. Human Resources Director, Brad Rule.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Today, I'm here to talk to you about time off and paychecks, which is something everybody likes. We have the twenty twenty one payroll and holiday calendar. There's really not a lot to explain about it, pretty self-explanatory. Christmas falls on a Saturday next year, and typically what we do is a Saturday holiday. We move to a Friday, that just happens to be Christmas Eve, so we'll move Christmas vacation or that holiday to Monday, so a four day weekend. Other than that, it's a pretty standard. And I'm hoping for any questions.
Any questions? I have a comment, I'm just excited to get out of the year two thousand twenty, and I look forward to two thousand twenty one, so.
Right, I hear that.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Brad. Uh, next up, we have item number six, presentation, two thousand twenty one Board of Commissioners meeting schedule. That is our county clerk, Kristen Cloud.
Yes, sir, thank you, Commissioners. You all have the proposed schedule for next year in your pockets. Nothing out of the ordinary, best I can tell. Questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Any questions? All right, we will move along, we have, uh, county, or no, where are we at? The discussion of creative enterprises. And is that Julie or who who's?
Both of us.
Both of you doing that, okay?
Sharon, you want to start?
Well, I don't know that lady's name, but, uh.
Did you ever have a chance to go?
No.
You didn't have a chance to go, you went, and I went.
I I'm familiar with it, though.
Yeah, but but anyway, this is creative enterprises is for developmentally disabled adults. It's not a daycare, it is for training, uh, education and employment. They exist in Forsyth County, and they want to come to Dawson County. Because there are eight people from Dawson County that go to Forsyth County. So, uh, I went, I was very impressed with the program. And all, well, no, I shouldn't, that sounds too cavalier, but we need a building for them. And if we can do that, they can run with everything else. So I think it's something that is very needed. And and I I, for one, I just want suggestions, does anybody know in the county, if, you know, if there's a building. Where we can house these people? Now, this program started in two thousand sixteen in Forsyth County with six or eight students, and it's at eighty students now. So there is a need out there, and I I'm passionate about this, and we need a building. And I guess I'm just reaching out, and does does anybody know a building? And, uh, is there anything that you can do? And you had mentioned we might have these people come and present to us, and then you can see more of what they're about. But, and I know that space is at a premium here, but I truly believe this is a need. So I would like for us to move forward with this, but I would like brainstorming about a place for these people to go. They do need a kitchen, that's that's part of it. And and you know, this lady told me. What's her, Lisa, do you know what her?
Lisa Bennett.
Lisa Bennett, she's the director.
Leo McIntosh is the executive director in Gwinnett County.
Okay, yeah, and they got it, Gwinnett County. And 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 these people, they've trained, they'll show up and work when other people won't. So they've really got a desire to work, and I I just think that maybe that's forgotten part of society. So, uh, I I just want us to see if we can move forward with this and have a place for these people to come and. And be productive members of society, and 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 she did stress it is not a daycare center. It is for education and employment, so. And do what?
The rehabilitation program.
Well, go ahead, I mean.
No, that's it, I just wanted to say that.
So, and I, and I wanted to know who was on board, or are you on board with it? Are you on board with it? You know, is Billy on board with it, uh, that we can move forward with this? Just your thinking about?
Well, I have toured at the one in Comen, I know the Leo McIntosh in Gwinnett County, and she's worked very closely with Charlotte Nash. And, uh. Tim and Billy has toured the facility in Comen, and Chris is going to get by to see it, because he's right there near it. And it's just an excellent program. I was looking in the audience to see if Talbot was here, because he would know a lot about our buildings. So, you know, I'd just like to ask that we continue to discuss this, maybe reach out to Talbot and ask him and. Take a look at, you know, where we might, or even if a private person in the community has something that they could offer, a top house or something, then that would be a tax write-off for them. There's just possibilities to do this.
Is it a, do they occupy the building from a certain timeframe on a daily basis?
The one in Comen is nine to three.
Nine to three, on a Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday, ninety three.
But they're the only ones that use that, aren't they?
It's a church.
It's in a church.
Church or city.
Their building.
Yes, yeah, so they don't, you know, somebody doesn't come in at three o'clock, you know?
They pay the city a dollar a year, and I think they have a twenty year lease with an option for another twenty. And they have nine acres there, they do a garden, they have a walking trail. They have another small building behind the church where they do arts and crafts and.
Pottery.
Pottery.
Is there an option to engage a local church to see if they have the capacity to to take it on, at least to get it off the ground and start it in Dawson County? And then move it forward to, once we do identify a building potentially?
You know, I mean, I I assume that's a possibility, but we need them a permanent place.
Yeah.
Don't you think?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
You know, we 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 don't need to be moving around.
Dawn is not here. I talked to Dawn about the senior.
Yeah.
Old building.
Old building. Because that would be the perfect.
Yeah, at the park.
And to be connected to her people and share the buses, because these people are going to need transportation. To be brought to the program and taken home. And there's also federal funds for. And, uh, there's also federal funds for that, that's provided for that service to transport them.
What was Dawn's feedback?
Dawn's feedback, you know, she's very willing to help to take a look at that building. She offered the, some of, a couple of the rooms in the basement. But they need, we need a kitchen. They need a kitchen because they teach them how life skills. So they need the kitchen. So that wouldn't work. And then also there's some programs at night in the basement. So they would have to clear out their things to make room for that. But, and then upstairs, she's going to put, uh, that, uh, equipment, exercise equipment in that main huge room. And, uh, if I, if she would really consider doing that over there in that other smaller room, then they could have the kitchen in that larger room and then maybe one or two of the other offices to have smaller classes. Because probably what they're going to anticipate, eight or nine students go down to Forsyth County from Dawson County. And Lisa Bennett, the director in Cummin says that that eight or nine people is going to start the program in Dawson.
Right.
So I anticipate the program starting with eight to 12 people right at the day one it opens.
Yeah, I'm fine. Well, I mean, obviously, um, I haven't had a chance to go visit the location, but I've had multiple conversations with the director and, um, it, it's, it's a valid program. We have a lot of needs for a lot of different segments of our population, and this is one of them. And so maybe our next step is get with staff and Talbot and just, uh, I'd see if we can identify some, some buildings. I do know that, that buildings are a challenge.
I know.
You know, we're, we're gonna.
And I don't know what's available in the KK Long Building.
I thought about that too, but I don't know.
I don't know what's, I don't know what's available.
There's what? No, no room?
Well, what they need to, and, and me and Billy have met, uh, and, and they're not asking for any money at all from the county.
Oh, no.
In fact, they've got money to pay for the transportation. If they rode our buses, they're willing to pay the, the trip fees to handle that. But I think what they're needing to is a, a building with separate rooms, because they have different type of classes for different groups. They are teaching, which is a great thing, life skills. That's where they need the kitchen. They need the computer room. They need the, you know, different rooms. They have to set up with TVs in some of them, computers in some of them, a workstation as far as crafts or whatever. So they need it. They need a building when they can have multiple rooms.
Yes.
Or separate them because they got different classes going on during that day. But in no time, and they even said in no time did they ask for a dime from the county.
No.
They're just needing a place to host.
After that, they'll run with it.
Yeah.
If they have the place, because they've done it in Forsyth and Gwinnett, and so they know what to do.
Uh, in four years, Sharon, you may have said this and I didn't hear it, but in four years, they went from eight or nine students to eight.
Eighty, from 2016.
Yes, in four years. So it's been very successful down there.
So it sounds like we're all kind of in agreement to move forward on gathering some more information and getting with staff in order to identify potential locations that are already county owned. And then maybe even engage in outside, uh, private partnerships, um, that are available in the community. So.
Absolutely.
Matt, you've got any thoughts on this at all?
Well, the creative enterprise is this, uh, program that I've watched get started at City Cummin.
You did? Okay.
So they are actually meeting in the old church building.
Yes.
My office for a long time.
Oh, okay.
So I watched them turn that into a, you've seen it.
Yes.
Immaculate.
Yes.
Fantastic. Uh, Lisa Bennett is, she's a warrior. She's going to give the state to give her everything she wants. So there is no cost to Dawson County.
That's right. That's right.
I would love to be a part of this program. Created comes to us on our epic Thursdays. That's one of our groups that comes with us on epic Thursdays. I would love to be a part of this program and, uh.
Do you have any thoughts?
I wish we did. I wish we did have more than we could just designate for that. We would gladly do that. I just don't know of anything offhand outside of the older senior center building.
I know.
At this moment. What a great program.
Oh, it is. It is. And there's such camaraderie there. You know, they really, they feed off each other.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, it was just inspiring. Yes.
This is a segment of our society that, um, kind of just pushed to the side a little bit.
And Dawson County.
They're just, but they're still there. And, and they need friendships and camaraderie and jobs.
Yes.
Fantastic program. I love the creative enterprise.
And this is one area we've really neglected.
We have.
Let's just be honest. We've really neglected this area.
You know, um, this just popped in mind, maybe completely outside of the realm, but I believe that in East Slosch, the school system has allocated funds to build a new IT building. They're now in that small, um, it's not really small, that house there next to, um, Robinson Elementary on Allen Street. That's where their IT is being based out of. So I don't know what their plans are for that particular building. Once they vacate that and build their own separate IT building, but, but that's something we might keep in mind and engage with. And staff can engage with the school to see if they have any opportunities as well.
You talking about that house, uh, across from the high school?
Further down. It's Allen Street, where Allen Street is next to Robinson.
Oh, well, the administration building.
Used to be. Yeah. Now it's their IT building. It's their IT has been hosted out of there. So they, on their East Slosch, they have fun or allocated dollars to build a new IT building. So that one, I don't know what they're going to do with it, but that might be something we might look at. Just as a consideration. Okay. Any other comments?
Just talk about it.
All right. So it sounds like staff's got some, some marching orders to, to work on that with, uh, with the board. All right. We're going to go into, uh, number seven, uh, I'm sorry, number seven B, uh, which is the one that we added, which is discussion of adding special call meeting for the purpose of, uh, addressing sign appeals. And I'm going to turn that over to our counsel, Ms. Davis.
Yes, um, we've shared an email with you. We have gotten a flurry of appeals for denial of billboard permits in the county. And pursuant to the procedures under the county side ordinance, we have to have a hearing on those within 30 days. We believe that we need to provide a 15-day notice and advertisement prior to that hearing. And so the way the appeals, when they came in and the way the calendar stacks up, it puts us, well, and the deadlines with the newspaper, all of those things unfortunately did not coincide very well together. And so it results in us really needing to set a special called meeting in order to timely hear these after giving appropriate notice, um, and running the advertisement. So, um, we need to run the ad tomorrow. I don't necessarily need a vote from you on this to call the special meeting, but because we're doing it on such short order, I did want to have us have a quick conversation about available dates. We need to hold it on either October 8th or October 9th. October 8th is a Thursday. So that would have you coming on that intervening Thursday. Um, and just wanted to open that for discussion as to when we might could get that scheduled, because we'll need to run that ad tomorrow.
I'm good with any, either day.
Do we have budget hearings tentatively scheduled yet for any of those times?
Vicky, I don't think so. No, ma'am.
Okay. I don't know if we could coordinate and have them back to back. I'm, I'm good with the eighth. So yeah, I mean, obviously we have to move forward with it. So. I'm good with the eighth.
Okay. October 8th in a particular time is a Thursday.
That's one of our off Thursday weeks.
Okay. Please.
No, she meant 9:00 PM for you.
Oh, midnight. Let's do midnight. What about 10:00? Does that suit you?
I've got a chamber board meeting at 9:30 that lasts until 11:00.
All right, let's do like that.
I've got chamber lunch at 11:30.
Very important.
I could do, yeah, I mean, I could skip that or, um, we could do 1:00.
1:00 PM on October 8th?
Yep.
Okay. Chairman, does that work for you as well?
If it's 1:00 AM, I'd be tickled. I'm good.
Chairman Thurman, is that acceptable on your schedule as well? October 8th at 1:00 PM?
Yeah, that works for me.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And Jamison for your staff. That works. Okay. All right. And, and that's really all I need. I don't need this to move to the voting agenda. We'll just get that, um, ad to Jamison tomorrow and make sure it gets placed with the newspaper. So thank you so much.
Okay. Excellent. Um, we're going to move on to number eight, which is county manager report. Dave?
Thank you, Commissioners and Chairman. Good afternoon. I have a very short, uh, report for you, and that is the key indicator report for the month of August, uh, as well as the agreements and contracts are in your packet. And just a reminder that on the 26th of September, shore sweep, 8 o'clock at War Hill Park. And that's really it. Answer any questions for you.
Any questions? Thank you. Uh, next county man or county attorney report?
I do not have a report. I do have some, uh, two issues for executive session, personnel and litigation. Looks like we don't have time prior to the, um, voting session, so we can do that afterwards. Um, I will notice, um, the public that we may have an item coming out of executive session, um, that would need to be added and voted on. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? That's it. So we are going to adjourn our work session. We're going to take about a five-minute break. We will come back in for our voting session. Thank you.